All right, now. We have our regularly scheduled township board supervisors meeting, so if everybody is joining me, I'm placing a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had no executive session since our last meeting, so at this point, I would like to open up the floor to any comments from citizens. Again, anybody on the Zoom call, if you would click the raise hand button in the lower right-hand corner of your screen so that we can recognize you. Anyone? Okay, moving on to engineering reports and environmental engineering, Diana.
Anything? There are no changes to the, or updates to the report that we submitted. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. So the engineer report, John.
May come at a shock, I have no addition to my report. All the plans are on the agenda tonight, are reported on my report.
Any questions for our engineer? All right, next we've moved to our consent agenda. Items A through I, are there any items on here that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through I. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, Vince's proposals, contracts, and agreements. First is authorization to execute York County Department of Emergency Services period dispatch. What do you user agreements?
Mr. Chairman, this is a program that we have been using. They're simply, the county's simply changing their web application with the power to agree.
But your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the authorization of executing York County. Agreement for 2022.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have authorization for township manager to send notice to proceed letter to East Penn Railroad.
Mr. Chairman, this is for Davis Drive at Great Crossing. The authorization would be for me to let the railroad know that they can proceed with ordering the equipment so we can lock in the price before it keeps escalating.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for authorization for the township manager to send the required notice.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Next, we have subdivisions and land development. First one is land development 2021-0002, East Market Street Apartments, 3883 East Market Street, Yorkland Gate.
I'll provide a little brief introduction, Mr. Chairman. This is a project that's being proposed for 150 apartment units on the address that you described to. We do have the controlling representative developer tonight that's going to speak to the project. It has been seen obviously at the planning commission and they did recommend a conditional approval. And the plan summary provides some of the outstanding issues that still are there, but they have gone through quite a few reviews, if you will, to the point where we have what I would characterize in some respects, the dotting of I's, crossing the T type of things that come with a subdivision plan or land development plan of the scale where you're going to need head out of pool NPDS permit approval and and providing approval for the surety with the bond and so forth. But I will say that the applicant or the consultant, we have the applicant has done the defined job in keeping staff in tune with what they've got in mind as well as providing a thorough explanation to the planning condition to get to the point where they are ready to speak to the supervisors about the project. For the joint going to introduce Mr. Justin Coons, representing the developer tonight as the engineer.
I thank you for having us. As Randall noted, we're at the corner of market in Yorkland Gate, I'm sure everybody's aware of the old hotel that used to be there. We're proposing redevelopment that site into 150 market rate apartments. With that. It's not a 7.3 tract. Randall noted, we've been working with PennDOT for enough quite a bit for access on the market street. That's kind of been one of the big questions with that. It ultimately, their agreement was they wouldn't provide full access to market, they wanted an exit of the, or right out of. That's what me and John was part of those discussions, they kind of ultimately agreed with the PennDOT so that we couldn't beat the two access point requirements. Required by the township, obviously we want full access to Yorkland Gate, but right out only. PennDOT has agreed in terms of emergency services that they're not going to stop township fire truck from using those entrance. Which is will be restricted as an exit of empty for residents of the apartment. Also with that, obviously, public water and super service to the site will be more or less reconnecting to what was there in some instances. And we are proposing sidewalk and street trees along market to finish that section of sidewalk out. And you've only requested two waivers and that just being preliminary plan and also final plans get. Outside of that, we've, you know, putting all the curving sidewalks, curb ramps, street lighting, all those requirements, the township working with their random John. Got any specific questions that I'd love to answer?
And I'm taking it that stat is fully in agreement with.
With the, yeah.
The waivers and the outstanding conditions.
That is correct.
Think you have drawings on your, on your computer systems and you are proposing five buildings and we would have 30 units per building.
That's correct.
And they've been coordinating already with the fire department and our staff with the addressing for the buildings and so forth. There's some things that have started, just bearing in mind that nothing's been approved, but at least getting something moving forward with the thought that they're going to attempt to see play approval by the board supervisor. Trying not to be too presumptuous, might be, but getting certain things in the works, if you will.
That's right, not being presumptuous, but ready to go.
Questions?
Randall, I have a question. I'm just, I'm not completely clear on what the waiver request is for preliminary plan. I, I know that's not an uncommon thing for us. It's just the language in the memo here. Explain to me how that works.
I'm going to allow you to speak and then I'll speak.
Okay.
Do that as well, just for, if I can provide any clarification or misadventure.
Yeah, we're proposing a preliminary final plan as we're not proposing any phasing of this. Our plan is to, upon preliminary final approval, we need to build all five buildings together and build the project as one. And that, that's why we were requesting preliminary plan approvals, we would have no future phases.
The board of supervisors always has discretion to determine that they ought to go through a preliminary plan process and this is sometimes it plans of this scale, that's pretty routine at municipalities, but there are other circumstances that the applicant is providing both the preliminary and final provisions within the context of what they're submitting. Supervisors certainly can entertain a waiver of such because they're not phasing it. If we're phasing it, that's a little bit of a different story, preliminary plan almost always part of that process rather than it being waived. So knowing that they have provided the lion's share of the information that's being required of the ordinance. I didn't have any issue with them requesting a preliminary plan waiver. We don't think of this, I don't want to speak for him, but I think we've based it on the same data. The one thing if they were not providing the necessary information on the plans and providing all the other supplementary data that they have. And so that, with that said, I'm recommending that supervisors consider approving that waiver request.
And the effect of approving that waiver is that we would be then approving the final plan today presumably?
That could be the case, sure, but if you're looking for additional information.
Deciding on the plan.
Pardon?
That we would be deciding if, yeah, never mind.
Potentially, yes.
So my understanding is preliminary final isn't because of multiple phases to a project.
Well, usually it depends on like the size of the project. You know, they want, they want to lock in approval at preliminary so that they got protection and maybe see and they can work on the final. Usually there's a lot of comments at the end.
Yeah. Since there aren't many, there are only two waivers.
I would agree, a lot of times if there has to extend public infrastructure to the site, you'll sometimes do a preliminary plan. They could do all, if there was a lot of earth moving, the site doesn't really have a lot of earth moving into redevelopment of the parcel. So if they had a, you know, PennDOT made them fix up an intersection or something like that. In that case, even if it wasn't phased, there's a lot of infrastructure, probably the appropriate preliminary final here.
Just that filled in swimming.
Right, yeah, exactly. So there aren't, aren't multiple phases and the infrastructure is testified to, it's, it's right there, water, sewer, and gas.
Other questions or comments?
My only other comment is that there seems to be a, there are a lot of conditions, which I don't think I would have any problem with, except for the complexity of having all those conditions to, you know, adding them to a, to a motion. I guess, so one, one just logistical question. We have a memo from the community development director that lists all of these waivers. Are the waivers actually the bold part in the memo?
So I think there's only two waivers.
I mean, condition.
You're talking about conditions.
Right.
That's what, I think the bold part is what's required to satisfy.
That is correct, that is correct.
The condition is actually directly above it, provide the name sealance, but I'm looking at one 3913A. Certificate shall be signed and sealed prior to the final plan recordation.
That is correct.
That's, that's the requirement, I mean, the requirement is above it and that's what the action would be.
Correct.
There are quite a number of them, but they look like they're predominantly administrative.
That would be correct as well.
I believe a number of those ones that are mainly bonus technical items have been addressed since then. While I'm looking at the board 17, is there an updated?
Yes, 26.
Oh, okay, so there's probably less than that.
That is correct.
Okay.
And these are items from my perspective that all could be done within a reasonable period of time prior to the 90 days expiring, if you will, of your approvals. I don't see anything here that the applicant can't get done in a reasonable amount of time. And nothing of any consequence is happening to the drawing. It's making sure that they get the approvals from outside entities as well as signing the plans and all the things that accompany preparing it for recordation. Obviously, the, we do have a, a copy of the cost estimate, it's just getting that approved and then getting the bonding in place. So these are all things that are commonplace in the context of a project like this. Nothing that, in my mind, that's going to stop the project.
Randall, could you give a little further explanation of 28911B28? Where the applicant is proposing a fee, a fee in lieu of dedicated recreation? How, how does that work and what is the fee in lieu?
I could, I could probably give you a quick rundown. So in our ordinance, it requires, this is in many, many ordinances in York County. You have the option of providing 0.02 acres of dwelling unit. But there's a five acre minimum. And it's got to be, so think about it, I think he has a seven acre site. So we would take five acres of this. And so the board gets to the point where they can choose to, the rec fee, just so you know, is about not the exact number, it's moved every year by resolution, every year you guys adopt it. I want to say it's 1,900 bucks changed somewhere around there.
I think that's correct, 1,800.
So they, their choice is to pay 1,900 dollars per dwelling unit. Or provide the 0.2 acres, five acres minimum. Now they do have at the back of this lot, I, you know, there's a small recreation area. And they have, I think they talked about a dog park.
Yeah, for the residence.
For, it's not public, thank you, right?
Yeah.
So they do have some recreational amenities, but the choice here is to, you know, the developer certainly would not want to dedicate the minimum of five acres.
Of course.
To the township because that takes the project out.
Sure.
There we are, so they've asked to have the fee in lieu of paid.
The fee in lieu, if my math is anywhere here right, is slightly less than 300,000.
Correct.
Two grand on 150.
We have to spend that within five years.
Okay. For three years. We restricted on what we have to spend.
You know, I don't think we've zoned, I think our parks are sort of a family of parks, I don't think we siloed.
Right.
I don't think, right. Some communities do, they, they say, okay, this ward, that ward, whatever.
Right. Thank you for your excellent.
No problem, I've run into it before.
All right, anything to add to that?
David George?
Nope. My, my only comment at this point is that I would very much like to approve this project. But I'm uncomfortable doing so based on the memo that's in front of me that lists the conditions. So I don't know how we get those conditions into our record accurately. I'm happy to let, have anyone else try.
I also have another question. This is with reference to land development plan SD. Is an SD a subdivision?
Yes. And there, there was one subdivision for that, which was a combined for, in fact, trade now due. Listed somewhere as a subdivision, I apologize for asking.
I think at the top it's called LD 2021-002.
Correct.
In the wording at the bottom, it's listed as.
Get your recommendation.
SD 2021.
I apologize. Wrong place.
All, yeah, everything.
And there's two of them listed there and one says land development, one says subdivision, and they both have a reference subdivision.
Right, I see, thank you. Should be out.
It is in fact one track currently.
Yes.
So this would be one motion with reference to land development, LD 2021 dash 0002. For the waivers and then one for the.
Correct.
And you take them together.
Correct.
And Don, your comment is you think there are too many conditions on here and we need those cleaned up first, or are you suggesting that you just need to know the mechanism for making sure that they get accomplished?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with the quantity of them, but I don't know which piece of each one of these conditions needs to be in a motion. And if we take the suggested motion to put this entire document in there, I'm not clear that that's accurate. To, you know, because every single condition has essentially three little sections to it and I don't really know which ones of those are comments and which are actual conditions.
Randall, was everything in one document to do with that?
Yes.
Correct. So I don't, I mean, we'd obviously be open to a conditional approval contingent upon addressing everything in that letter, I don't have a strong of these, I don't, but, but I saw the last one. And I would be fine with that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, as, as the staff, we have the responsibility to assure that all of those conditions are addressed satisfactorily before there's any recordation of a plan. We don't allow plans to be recorded unless the conditions have been met by the applicant. That's course of actions in any municipality, whether it be in York County, Lancaster County. That part is fairly commonplace and there's nothing on here that cannot be addressed in a timely manner.
What, what do you think needs to be in a motion that approves the plan with the conditions?
Are you looking to cite the specific sections or say that the plan is recommended for a, it is being approved contingent upon the comments being satisfactorily addressed? Certainly can be the recommendation.
I think I think Don has the same question I have. Is the, is the suggested language that you've listed at the end of your memorandum sufficient? Or do the individual conditions have to all be listed one at a time in a motion?
I don't believe that all the conditions need to be listed. It can reference the, the document that's been prepared by staff that indicates these are the remaining comments that need to be satisfactorily addressed via to recordation of the plan. Without them, the plan does not get recorded.
And just to be sure, we're all looking at the same documents, 12 conditions.
Correct.
Randall, indulge me and look at the very last condition. And could you tell me which part of that, that starts with 281-16 and goes down to the
The bold print.
Motion.
The bold print is what they need to satisfactorily address. And the O and M requirements, O and M agreements are something that has been typically done since I've been here and other municipalities do as well. It, it's a document that the applicant.
I'm not, I'm not discussing the content of this at all, I'm just trying to understand what actually is a waiver.
There is no waiver being requested.
What, what's actually a condition, okay? So we're saying that this plan is approved condition upon O and M requirements have been added to sheet 15, while other O and M agreements will be executed and recorded with the final land development plan set.
That is correct, that is the condition.
Okay. That's what I couldn't find in any of the conditions.
I apologize if that was unclear. The, the other information is provide context to what the action is needed by the applicant to satisfactorily address the con.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I suggest the first one reference to land development plan, change that to LD. When we need to recommend approval of the requested waivers, it's listed above, it's appropriate.
I don't think, no, see.
Two, yeah. Okay. And then with reference to land development, again, plan SD 2021-002. Final land development plan through East Market Street. I need to recommend approval of the final plan with the 12 conditions listed.
Right, but I would maybe identify what the documents looking.
Yeah.
Is that your staff report?
Yes, it's dated, March, May 26. Board of Supervisors Plan Summary for this particular plan.
May 26, 2022.
I think that's, I should say, Board of Supervisors.
Go for it.
Reference to land development plan LD 2021-002.
Final land plan six, Park Street Apartments. Move to approve the two requested waivers and twelve conditions. All is outlined on order supervisor's plan summary that it made twenty six, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Does that make it Charlie? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening.
You too. Thank you. All right, next we have subdivision twenty twenty one dash zero 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 six, York Gallery Limited Partnership, twenty eight ninety nine, Wafer Group.
Mr. Chairman, this is a plan that the board of supervisors have seen, I think it states back to twenty twenty one or early twenty twenty two. And this is where the Red Robin is positioned, if you will, uh, part of the York Gallery complex. They are looking to subdivide that property from the, the campus itself or the mall. And, uh, there was discussion previously about providing sidewalk along the Pleasant Valley Road. Property line, and, and with that said, the applicant at that time decided to have a opportunity to consider what they wanted to do in regard to placing that sidewalk. In part because that was what the secret board supervisors were asking them to, to do. So with that said, they have brought forth a revised plan from that previous discussion. And they're looking to have the supervisors consider some waivers in respect to that plan. As well as showing you what they have in mind for providing the sidewalk requirements along Pleasant Valley Road. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ray Anderson, which site design concepts to speak to the plan that's in front of you.
Perfect. Thank you, Randall. That was a great introduction. You covered all the bases that I wanted to hand out for the board. Um, it's exhibited. I, um, like Randall mentioned, after our meeting with the staff, uh, where it was determined that sidewalks would be requested along Pleasant Valley Road. Randall, um, we went to work, we did a survey, um, we located improvements and, uh, and grades along the corridor of Pleasant Valley Road, which included, uh, utility poles, curving sidewalks. And, and at the conclusion of the survey, we identified some substantial site constraints. And those being eight large utility poles, um, and some signage. And then a grade issue, a grade drop between, um, right around the back of the poles down to the mall ring road is what I would call it. In these pictures, you'll see that there's two sets of stakes. The green stakes represent a sidewalk that's four feet wide with a minimum one, one and a half foot grass strip between the back of the curb and the, the face of the sidewalk. The orange stakes represent where a sidewalk would go if it were installed with a four foot grass strip, five feet wide. The orange is what's required, uh, per the ordinance. The green is what we are proposing and asking for relief. Maybe four foot walk, it would be, uh, necessary to relocate poles or signage if it's the, the the quarter the way it is right now.
And to just go around those poles and those areas. I've seen that done in the past.
So, so that is an option to go around the poles, but when you, like, like I pointed out, um, and in those pictures, if you look at some of those pictures, the gray drop right on those poles is significant. We talked to three contractors, um, and they all mentioned that there was concerns about the gray drop. If, if you put a flat sidewalk in, basically not going to keep back from the sidewalk, you're going to end up with a, a drop, um, which require retaining wall. Um, but the concern would be safety on the, you put the retaining wall and then you take vegetation out and then you have a clear drop down to mall ring roads. And there's eleven plus seventeen, in fact, your package that shows the, the two configurations. The yellow hatch is the proposed configuration and then the red line would be the all set. Let's hope for the grass strip with five foot seven.
So imagine that the concerns we have is that, uh, one foot is really not a whole lot better than, I think, the sidewalk chasing to the curb. And so that would be a safety issue and then winter time maintenance of the road. You're, you're going to be getting a lot more.
Your engineer mentioned that, yeah, and, and that's a good point. So the mall would pay someone, uh, to remove the snow from the sidewalk and then the cloud would come along and push the, the snow on the sidewalk. And that's a, a risk, um, that the mall would have. Would deal with.
So instead of pushing out behind the poles. Sidewalk come in front of those few areas where the poles are maintained, the five foot sidewalk, most of the decoration. If you incorporate this.
That would be an, an, an option that we agree would, would still be the concern. On the back walk down.
So I will say, I don't like the idea of doing it just blanket across the entire section. There are a number of areas where it is flat and could be. So let's start with that. Any other questions or comments from other members of the board?
Suggestion. Just having a now sidewalk with the poles relocated. If you come back with a plan, it shows where that can be accomplished and there are keys.
Okay. I believe that would still require a waiver request, if I'm correct, because we want to be meeting the ordinance. Verbatim. But I guess the waiver approval would have a condition that, that we would meet the ordinance where we can. With the. Monotony, okay.
There's a waiver.
Okay.
That way we cover most of the intent.
Okay.
Of protecting the, um, walking public. But still give you some relief in areas where it's not possible.
Yeah, makes sense.
I want to hear from everybody else before.
Just.
I mean, there's four of us here, so.
I like that, yeah. That's good, Ben.
Do you want to add on this tonight or do I assume the plan that I choose? How much of that can be accomplished?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd actually like to see how much of that can be accomplished and where you're actually proposing that it's too steep to, to put a full set sidewalk in. Because I see quite a number of pictures here where it does look flat and open.
Yeah.
And that might be misleading, but.
I, yeah, so that's my thought. It could be that some of the pictures are conceiving. But at the ends, like around the access drives, um, we can, we can swing those around the poles.
What would you be doing with the vegetation along there, which has been this to be overgrown and less?
It wouldn't, it would need to be trimmed.
Twenty five year tips.
There are massive evergreen trees, yes. So, the, yeah, so the contractors even mentioned, even with the, the land that we had proposed there, that there would be some significant tree trimming in, in some of the areas. I think. See what the end is on. There's was an ivy growing out. You know, on the third page, you can see that. Did you see? You know. I get it really bad, so I'm.
Like that's in our planning schedule.
Basically. So we can do that. Yeah, we can bring it back, it shows where we can, um, meet the ordinance where we can. But at least we got direction, that's right, that's great.
Slope, are you trying to maintain behind the curb or behind the side? Like a three to one or?
So currently it's twenty, it's twenty five percent, some four to one and, and then three to one in other areas. So the areas where it's three to one already, it, it would either be a retaining wall or it'll be worse, steeper, I should say.
It's three to one would be manageable for knowing. It's still, right?
Yes, it's pretty, you could mow, you could probably mow, you know, four to one is easy. You don't even have to wait the wheel. Three to one, you have to wait the wheels to keep, you know, that.
They think steeper than three to one's, uh, idea.
Yeah, and you know, they, they have such vegetation there, they probably, you know, they're probably thinking, let's, how, how do we reduce maintenance? And I'm, I'm thinking they would probably put some, uh, ground cover there that you wouldn't have at the bottom and then.
Okay.
You know. Like, uh, junipers or something like that.
Something low.
Something low, you know, because they're all about cost too. Aesthetics and cost are the thing. More, you know, I think the, what you heard from the board tonight is they want something aesthetic and safe for the pedestrian. I'm happy to get sidewalk, but we want it to be usable and, uh, if we make some adjustments, we'll have something much more usable that everybody can.
Very good. I hear you, Dan.
Okay, next we have subdivision twenty twenty one dash zero zero eight, Lucas Grove Road, Wilshire Drive.
This particular subdivision plan has been in front of this board before as well. Uh, and the board was asking the applicant again to look at sidewalks and curbing and addressing some other issues that exist out on the site. And we as staff did go out to meet with the, the, the applicant consultant and the builder. The staff that attended this himself, Mr. Mucciani, Mr. H, to see what possibilities exist out there, uh, with the installation of, of sidewalks and, and curbing. And with that said, the applicant has brought back revised drawing for what we had previously seized with their efforts, uh, what they have, they're proposing. But there are waiver requests attached to some of those, uh, improvements, if you will. In that they're looking for modification from meeting the exact standard of the ordinance. With that said, I'm going to turn it over, uh, to the engineer, Mr. Johnston, representing the applicant tonight to explain what they have proposed.
Okay, thank you, Randall, and thank you, Ford. I think it's come to speak to me, present, uh, our proposal. Um, I was here in March, we had some discussion, if you recall, on our eight lot subdivision on Locust Grove Road, State Road and Wilshire Drive Township. Um, at that time, we had proposed just putting sidewalk along Locust Grove Road. And, um, the major discussion was along Wilshire. You know, we know that, uh, we're right across from the camp security property and there's a vision that the park, uh, would be there in the future. And that being said, in the course of the ordinance, um, and, and the board's wishes were to get pedestrian length as much as possible. You recall that, uh, along Wilshire, that there's, there's no current sidewalk there now. Our new proposal, uh, after meeting with staff on the site is to extend, uh, sidewalk along Wilshire Drive. So again, bring it down Locust Grove and we would then take it along Wilshire Drive. Um, we still are requesting relief from curbing and sidewalk. I'm sorry, curbing and street widening along those roads. Um, again, with, with the, uh, the sidewalk link along Wilshire, um, we're proposing, uh, to separate it, uh, cross section, everything on the plan that we provided to you with the waiver request package. But we will get a five foot wide sidewalk along and we will do some, uh, there's, you recall there was a swale that parallels, uh, Wilshire. We do some grading in there and clean up the, the tree growth that's in there now and, um, be about a one foot deep swale is all that's really needed to convey water down there. Staff had looked at that large culvert along Wilshire and our plan we're proposing to, uh, provide a large construction using, uh, the township's future plan to replace that large culvert. Yes, uh, finally with our waiver, um, you recall, along Wilshire Drive at the end of our project, lot eight was a steep wooded lot, uh, that just proposed not for development at this time. So we would be proposing to add notation to the plan there that in the event that it's ever developed in the future, the sidewalk that we are now posing along Wilshire would be extended, uh, in the future along the front of lot eight. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you have, uh, this time, but, um, our new proposal again, we think makes a addresses your major concern of having that pedestrian lane, um, in close proximity to the park. We feel curved inside, well, we are not necessary for the drainage situation that we have out there, as well as the state road, it's, it's width or, or adequate. So this time I'd like to, uh, get your input regarding our week. And then I would, you're just a waiver only, we're not here to act on the plan tonight. Uh, we'd be coming back to you in the future. If the decision on the waiver, I know how to proceed.
Lot eight is part of a much larger, or that is a much larger course.
So that's correct. That's correct. That's the electoral residual that puts, uh, Paul Collins, who's, who's with me tonight, the builder, uh, equitable owner in the prop project, uh, yeah, he does not, uh, want to develop that. He wants to keep that as a buffer to his existing.
You did add streetlights too.
We, we did, yes. Like, you know, what I provided tonight is an updated waiver request letter. Uh, that, that, that's the major issues that I've talked about. We have, um, withdrawn our request to not install streetlights. So our current plan, our current proposal is to have streetlights installed. So current plan, our current proposal is to have streetlights installed for township requirements.
What is the likelihood that body could be developed into multiple parcels and houses in the future? Is there access to the interior of that lot?
Speak to that.
That's right now, no, there's only access, well, my property, this property of this. To access it from Wilshire Drive. If I sold it as a lot to someone when I retired, so my house, someone certainly built a house up there, but to develop. You know, I did. I did the whole project and only subdivided lots on, obviously, just the also the cost of paper laying. The ultimate goal is ten, fifteen years. More likely we will sell lot eight at a lot. For the same lot.
How much?
Lot eight. So. At this point, we are going to put the water and sewer ladder to. So it is, it pretty much has to build a lot of this, not all of the house. I like my privacy there. I'm starting to keep it, so.
Yeah, we have this dilemma that we don't. We usually put notes on plans for future sidewalk. When it's a a larger say maybe an industrial piece of land or something like that, that if we actually come back and ask for that to be built at some point in the future, they actually have to. Typically like to do that in a development where we're selling individual lots and a homeowner gets surprised with an expensive sidewalk request at some point in the future. So I guess I'm just trying to weigh in my mind that this is with like an eight acre parcel and there's potential for putting multiple houses in there. Development at some point in the future where developer might have to where we're involved with the sidewalk along the frontage of Wilshire Drive. At that point versus requesting it now is part of this plan. So thoughts from my fellow supervisors. Anybody?
With, with, I could interject, the photograph for what we submitted shows that seven, eight boundary that we talked about. What's there? And again, it's a frontage left there. And again, as the picture illustrates, there's no sidewalks along Wilshire. So it's a matter of, the note, you know, perhaps the D could have that language as well as the notation on the plan that, you know, if it's just sold for one single family lot, which given with the steepness and so forth, I think there's a lot of challenges if someone try to connect a roadway through that, through that track. And so that being said, you know, we think the picture illustrates kind of why we're asking for that. In the future, if somebody's going to develop, they'll, they'll know in their de-restriction, the addition that sidewalk would need to be built and that they would be mass grading that whole bank of the frontage there and blending it into their specific houses.
I, I don't, I don't think I have a particular problem with not doing sidewalks just on that one short section, which as I understand it is the sidewalk would either end at the end of that lot or before it. And I don't think I have a big concern about putting a note on there that. Yeah, I think whoever, if someone decides to develop that, they'll, they, they should have the wherewithal.
Yeah, that would be handled at that time.
Yeah.
Comments from community development?
I did have a conversation this afternoon with Mr. Johnston and indicate what I said to him as well as think that the developer here put forth an effort to address the concerns of the board and supervisors knowing of the constraints that do exist out there, that they have put forth a great big effort in providing the sidewalks. You can make ask questions regarding to the curbing, but I think there's some sort of management involved in that as well. But I think that we are getting some of what are wanted to ask for, that they are providing a pedestrian connection for both the pro road and Wilshire Drive. So I think that that's something we initially did not have. So from that standpoint, we appreciate that they're willing to make the effort to do so. Not that they don't have an obligation to develop or to do, the order requirements. In that they're willing, they're willing to work with township to try to make this a development that the supervisor will find acceptable and that it would be a something that will be positive reflection of the township. So from that standpoint, I appreciate the efforts that they have made from where we've started to where we are now. But I would see within the context of looking for modifications and or relief, if you will, from certain provisions that are in our ordinance.
John, you're up.
I have, I have a question. Is, did I understand correctly that the request before us is only on the waivers and not for the approval of a plan?
That's correct. I will say that I was not aware of that until Mr. Johnson said that tonight. We did not speak about that this afternoon and I was not aware of it.
Okay, and I would, I would love to hear the thoughts of the township manager about curbs and sidewalk and the advisability of approving this, these waivers tonight.
Typically, I would prefer to have everything. I would prefer to have the widening, I prefer to have the curving sidewalk, streetlights. However, in this particular case, I do see that there are complications with doing the curving and sidewalk or curving and widening. On, especially on Wilshire Drive, where Wilshire Drive is a low volume roadway. It does not really have any future potential of further development down Wilshire Drive. So with that being said, I'm satisfied with not doing the widening in the curb because we got everything else that we were hoping for. Which includes additional right of way to
to do the string.
To do our pipe culvert replacement.
Is that enough or do you need the other side?
I, we need it on the other side, but they don't control that.
I know.
Yeah, we need, we need a little bit on the other side. Going for permitting now.
Lots of them.
I agree with you. It's like they made a good day to get us as close to what we would like to have as they can.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort to put this together. So we memorialize it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that with reference to subdivision as the two oh two one dash zero 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 eight that we approve the four waivers as requested in our memo dated May twenty-sixth.
Are we approving the waiver of installation of curbs and sidewalks or a modification?
It's not, you're going to be putting in the sidewalk with the curbing.
There's no curve.
Right, so that would be a wave.
Curving and widening.
Widening and curbing.
Right.
Okay, and the last one underneath the, the section, you had a listing of what the section required. Here, this is what they're proposing to do, so. I was slightly confused.
Oh, nice. I mean, every, everyone is different.
And I, I understand.
And how it's provided. I wanted you to have, again, contextual lies, what they're asking for and what they're willing to do, so you understood actually what this drawing is in. Obviously, I took the language generally provided by the applicant, but I obviously I read through all of that and made sure that this is what in fact we're asking for, to make sure that it is then laid out to you in a manner that you're interested in apologizing.
No, I.
That's not clear.
Got it.
I, I remain concerned that, that I just moved to waive what I think we've moved to waive. We just. That, because that description has to, has to be followed through on now. That it, you know.
If you read number four, insulation curves and sidewalks, we're not waving.
Well, yes, that's correct. The whole thing includes curves inside.
But it makes it sound like we just waived all curbs and sidewalks if you just.
Didn't vote on it, so we didn't.
Excellent point.
So.
Stated there, waivers and or modifications.
So.
Yeah. Depending on you contextualize that in the motion that you made.
Yes. I understand that. I don't think that's the motion in front of us and.
You know, as we. Right, any sidewalk reference would be lot eight frontage, except that eight restriction.
And that's a modification. That makes sense, Tom.
I think it does. I'm not sure what we do with it.
Random clarification.
Yes.
Proposed language at the bottom references five acres.
I, my group, the two together, number four, section two eighty-nine dash thirty-one, just curbs and thirty-two in sidewalks.
Okay, so we're gonna waive thirty-one and we're gonna modify thirty-two.
That would be correct.
And. But as written here in.
Um, yes.
You're asking for a modification to install curves along Locust Grove Road, Wilshire Road, within six months after we see a notice from the township. Because I'm, I'm a little unclear on how, on the whole thing. Waving a lot of fun. I think you asked for a couple of conflicting things, so I want to try to clean this up and make it as as easily understood.
From our, we're requesting a waiver of curbing, widening with the whole project frontage and, and probably since the waivers ran out tonight, we did not six month note on that. So specific lots unless there's work done, it's necessary. And the sidewalks modifying that sidewalk to only give a modification to lot eight frontage. The rest of the sidewalk, we are installing along the other seven lots. You could add whatever mutation, since it's not, you know, you could add mutation to lot eight, which is the need. We already need to treat your sidewalks, even if, you know, so that you even have to have that.
Well, if that ever, if that ever went to length of all. What if then, it's not correct?
Yeah.
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 The only way you wouldn't get it is if they built just one single family home.
On lot eight?
Yeah.
Not get the sidewalk?
If, if you, if, if it was waived now, that lot, even though I know you guys said we're, we're proposing not to develop it. But I've often said is we gotta provide water and sewer for it because ten years from now, somebody could buy the eight acre parcel. At that point, they wouldn't have to come back to, they'd go write the building permit.
Right, and there'd be a plan note, you know, that modification only was granted to sidewalks in front of lot eight. And any development that individual and or developer, for more than one, would have to correct.
And development defined as two or more building units, right? So that's how NBC determines what it develops, two or more buildings.
Or a single family, right? Who would be willing to put that mutation in the deed and on the plan, you know, building a single family residence on lot eight? I'd be going to continue that sidewalk. That when, when in that grass.
So that really is modification. If you will put sidewalks in as required, seven building lots and eight will be a note. Done, good, done.
Sounds like that's what we want. I don't, you know. I'll be happy to rescind my motion if that helps.
Well, that's a start. If you want to do what they want.
I'm not sure that I'm confident of. I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying. I'm just not confident how to, how to put that into action that would get us exactly what we want.
The opposite of that, Charlie.
Well, Eric.
So we're gonna, we're gonna waive. So we're gonna, we're gonna waive. One, two, and three, we're gonna waive the first part of number four, which is two eighty nine dash thirty one, installation of curbs and, and widening. Is that correct? Right. And then for number five, it's a modification. Sidewalks will be installed on lots. Well, it says four through seven at one point here. Which lots are along both this road.
Of one, two, three.
Okay, so. Sidewalks will be installed on one through seven. And a note will be put on lot eight requiring sidewalk at the time of construction. That's not right, Charlie.
Construction of what? Big family home? When do we normally collect that building from?
Eric was mentioning in the deed that he would reference a note in the deed, that somebody could buy it. And then, when they, there'd be a note in there, so they're required from sidewalk. That's about the only flag that we would try to get off of.
That's fine, constructions.
Do you have a, down? Sort of kind of? Can we use that as the motion? Okay, I made the motion. Motion a second for discussion, Don.
Nope. Good.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, thank you. Do a formal revision to the plan set, incorporate what we learned tonight, and then come back and see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything?
Nope.
All right, solicitors.
Right, at the last meeting, there was presentation on the properties located on Mount Zion, Market Street, posed mixed use involving some drive-throughs, convenience full gas station, apartment units. And of course, it's in a mixed use zoning district, and so even though it's in the town center overlay, but the mixed use district does not allow drive-throughs or, or gasoline stations. So, Tony McNeil, on behalf of the applicant, sent a letter to the township. Given some alternatives, and guess what? Hopefully, request on the board is, you know, what what direction do you want to give staff concerning, if any, concerning this project? Tony McNeil's letter outlines fairly well what the options are, and even aside from not doing anything, keeping it as it is. But the alternatives would be to either have a text amendment to allow drive-throughs, and I think there's also height, exceeding the height limitation, gas stations, drive-throughs. Mixed use district. Uh, rezoning it commercial highway. What's your third?
To give the board greater latitude.
Oh, that's right.
And additional use proceeding to make modifications.
In the town center overlay, because that was really the issue before, towards, you know. You can only exercise what power you give yourself. Each of them has their, you know, those positives and negatives. I mean, if you do the text amendment, it applies then to everything in the mixed use district, all properties. So you could maybe perhaps put some restrictions on it, if you're going to do a text amendment where, you know, drive-throughs or gas stations have to be off of material street. I know that there's, you know, drive-throughs, there's stacking issues, so you may, you may want to explore some language that would prohibit it. They would have to demonstrate that, you know, no stacking would cause vehicles to be on public, right away. You know, then you have to decide if you're going to give yourself more power, how much more power. And does that raise an issue of, you know, I'm in a mixed use district. I can't put a drive-through, but if I'm in the town center overlay with an underlying mixed use district, I can't. That raises some issues there. So, you know, I, it's or the rezoning, the rezoning, the commercial highway, you can allow everything. Not direct, yeah, it's commercial highway, there's like a little strip.
If Charles had this zoning map pulled up, it'd explain.
Yeah, I have a little one, and he, I know we talked, if I may, we talked a little bit very, very briefly about this for the last meeting. And the one thing that I noticed on the zoning map in Carroll Circle here is that right now, this area we're talking about is already its own kind of little island. So right now, we're zoned, um, it's this right here, within the town center overlay, and everything within it, well, town center overlay is mixed use, and around it is neighborhood commercial, so since that's all mixed use right now, I think we take that and switch it over to commercial highway. Just take all the parcels that are currently mixed use and switch them to commercial highway. It could, you know, my client doesn't get control of, we can create this property right here, that we'd have to get consent from that property owner. Um, but that's why I thought maybe that was actually an option to present. Now, whether that makes, you know, as Charlie said, there's pluses and minuses to going that direction versus one to the other, but I wanted to give you all the options.
Charlie, since we're gonna be doing the comp plan here in the near future, but that's gonna take two years. What this would, the whole thing would be reviewed as part of that. But what, what, would be an option as a stopgap between now and.
Well, I, I I think what it would be, I don't, I'm not sure.
Would the, the comment you made with the restrictions arterial road, would that be a stopgap?
Well, I thought, okay, I thought you meant we'd just resume. But, yeah, I mean, you know. I mean, the comp plan takes the overall view of what your land uses want to be and what your future growth wants to be. I mean, is that best as commercial highway? I mean, you know, if you zone it commercial highway, and maybe this project doesn't go through. Now, wait, so you gotta look at the use of the commercial highway, make sure that there's not something there that you don't want to see in the corner. But the text amendment, yes, the text amendment, you know, is a possibility. It's a little, I think it's a little easier procedurally. But then, again, it's going to apply throughout mixed use districts in the township, so it should be some analysis as to, you know, what properties front and arterial, we're going to do it like that. And to see how many properties would be affected.
And if I may, Charlie, one of the things that actually Mr. McKenna was just mentioning, actually, there is actually a lot of the mixed use district that funds on arterials more than you realize, and so we could even potentially, especially with the gasoline sales, maybe restrict it further to intersections that have a certain traffic volume. Because really, that's what, I mean, yes, we have a lot of drive-throughs, I think, in the mixed use district already, up along, around, um, along Market Street. You know, and maybe that's fine to say, hey, if you've got the frontage on Market Street and you have enough property for queuing and stuff, maybe that's okay. But the gasoline sales, from a practical standpoint, they're going to be looking at an intersection site probably anyways. Um, so maybe you could even further restrict that to certain intersections within the mixed use district. We'd want to work with staff at looking at the mixed use and seeing what different intersections you have. You do have a gasoline station, obviously, in the mixed use district, rudders that predates, I think, but still, the concept would be that type of intersection, the intersection that we're looking at here, those are maybe the appropriate places that would be zone mixed use, but would be appropriate for gasoline.
I have a quick question. I know one of the options that you stand was commercial highway, that would eliminate the residential property.
So, I was just looking at that, and I think when I have looked at this before, the thought would be that you could take um, a portion of the property and zone it to the is that R, R one, is that right?
Yeah, cut that top off.
Yeah, and zone it to the.
You have multi-family in that concept plan, right?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, is if you take and put kind of that portion as part of the R one, so it's not, it would be pretty to do it that way, for sure.
It would be contiguous, I mean, it'd be okay there.
Yep.
Stacy, what's the height permitted in the R one?
Yeah, I don't know, that's the other thing. Well, I don't see that as well, but you know, we might be creating problems there.
We allow, in, in our law, we allow multi-family dwelling.
Right, I'm looking at the heights. I'll please tell me if I, this is your chart that here.
Just not to interrupt, but I thi- I think rezoning is absolutely my least favorite idea, because rezoning, you know, that's forever, kind of, and it's not tied to this project at all. Not that Stacy would come to us and ask us to rezone and then change the project around, but we have to be concerned about, about that. And I think, I think the other two both have potential, the other two approaches.
Yeah, and we're, two, we're just changing all mixed use to give everybody more latitude, three would be more tied to town center that we could make the decision as it makes sense to the township. On a, on a case by case basis.
And I mentioned it, Charlie, they're not exclusive, so if you like the idea of both two and three, we can include both two and three in, in a text. Um, if you have a preference for one or the other, then that's the direction to go. They kind of solve different issues, right?
Yeah, as I take a look at this map with, it seems like a comprehensive plan, there's a bunch of mixed use, it needs to be commercial highway. There's this flexible, this flexible district here is really industrial. This over here is really commercial highway. No, this is. So. What are the thoughts of the board?
Well, for me personally, I think this echoes with Don said, I couldn't hear everything, but for me personally, I get a very negative reaction to these.
Oh, yeah, I think at this point, that one's off the table, so.
As far as the other two options, from my perspective, uh, drive-throughs in a post-COVID world make a lot of sense to me, business community, I don't know how we get there, whether two and three get us there, but to me, I think directionally, that's right, and comfortable going major changes. However, we do it to allow for driving situations.
Are you okay with us looking at the concept of the gasoline sales as well in very limited circumstances?
I'm willing to consider, I'm open to.
So that's where number three comes, that's not a blessing.
I am.
Okay, great. Well, then, maybe, um, from what I'm hearing here, maybe what it makes sense is I'll reach out to you, Randall. We'll get together and maybe we'll put something together that does both two and three. Um, make some changes to the mixed use, so because I know, obviously, just last, last meeting, you had that issue, the drive-through issue in other situations as well. Um, but also, perhaps gives the board a little bit more latitude to make some modifications in the town center overlay. Um, just to deal with whatever projects you get in front of you in, in that area.
So, question I have, what, what's the definition of arterial roadway?
It's, we have, we have definitions in our ordinance, but it's, you know, we have a minor and a major arterial, and those are roads like Mount Zion Road would be a, a, you know, a major or minor, but uh, in, at some places, it's major. Mount Zion Roads are certainly an arterial, thirty's an ar- major arterial, roads like that, certainly, uh, Concord Road or something like that is, is, has recently moved from, that's by a minor arterial, also a major car, or is that move traffic from one community to the other.
Yeah, I just want to be careful of the definition, like, if we say gasoline sales on properties adjacent to an arterial roadway. Uh, there's minor and major, uh, there are areas that mixed use.
You totally have three categories, the lowest version was local, then they had a collector, and then arterial. Then they have major and minor and all subcategories down below that, but, you know, like Haynes Road is, is an arterial road. But Kingston Road, even though there's a lot of traffic on it, that would probably be a collector. And our ordinance does allow a lot of direct access to a collector road for certain uses, so you would have to look at those things to make sure you're not gonna have a gas station on Kingston.
I think Stacy mentioned a combination of having a major arterial intersecting with, uh, what is these, market, is that considered a?
That would be, that would be an arterial, oh, you, you got two arterials there.
Intersection of two arterial roads, I think, would give, give, uh, um, some security that it's not gonna be a whole other.
Right, like some minor road where, where we're dealt against.
Right.
Some, some non-commercial type area.
I'm always concerned about unintended consequences.
And so long as there's another property that is.
Well, well, certainly, I think you, if, I'm sorry, if, if you look at, um, is it Haynes Road and, um, that Mount Rose?
Yeah.
I would think right there, you probably have that. You might have that.
Arterial, arterial, right.
That same situation, in fact, you have a gas, you have a gas station.
Yeah.
That's at least another one, and there might be, there could be another one in there too, but that's part of what we look at. That's at least another one, and there might be, there could be another one in there too, but that's part of what we look at.
Yeah, I don't know if the gas station is actually in Springfield area or next township, over up at the top of Mount Rose.
Oh, you're, I know where you're thinking.
Edgewood or Longstown.
It's actually, it's, there's three townships that come together, Windsor, York, and Springfield.
Elkin Donuts is in Windsor, the old Gaddy gas station's in Dr. Ragland's office is the last building in Springfield.
And one foot of CVS is in.
And it goes diagonally up to the water tower.
Mm-hmm, that's it, that's exactly the line, yep. Please include Charlie in this conversation.
Yeah, he, he wants to be popping on everything. Absolutely.
So is that what you're looking for tonight?
Yes, we, we appreciate it. I think that's the feedback that we needed, and we appreciate your time, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where are we?
Manager.
I have two items to just mention to the board in addition to my written report. Number one, over the last month, so I've been receiving more calls than I can imagine on complaints from residents on yard waste. And I don't know if the board has received any, but specifically, it's the lack of or the inconsistency of their yard waste. So I've had two face-to-face meetings with them, the most recent was this Monday. So they promised me they'll get better. They told, and they have some consumer, customer service issues with not getting back to people, giving people wrong information, incorrect information. So I'm on top of that, I just want the board to know, but.
Now that you mention it, I have seen that.
If you drive around the township and pay attention, there are a lot of containers out sitting along the curb of yard waste, and this is
Past the pickup day.
Past pickup. And this is township-wide, it's not just a particular section.
I've also seen them pick up yard waste with the regular trucks.
Wish they shouldn't be doing, but yard waste does go into a rear load garbage truck, because they take the yard waste down to H and H and Springfield in terms of tumult or whatever.
I, I witnessed that with my own, I had a container of yard waste out, and they picked up my garbage, then they picked up yard waste and dumped it in the sink.
My second, I do that too.
Yeah.
Guilty.
I didn't do it, they, I, it said yard waste on the side. They didn't take it as yard waste, they took it as regular waste.
My second thing was just a reminder that to check your schedules for possible conditionally used earnings in June. I know two board members will not be in attendance, but for the other three, if you could check your schedules.
We talked earlier about planning on being here and you're not, correct? Who else is not? You.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure Don and Charles are here.
That's all I have.
I'm planning to try and attend.
For your aquarium.
No, no, it doesn't try.
So that's it?
That is it, thank you.
Uh, next one, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero three, which is the ordinance amending chapter three twenty-five zoning to modify density factor applicable to multifamily dwellings in the neighborhood commercial district from thirty to four. And I will recuse myself from this vote.
I'll move for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero three. Second?
Second.
I think that's everybody. I have a motion and two seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
Abstain. Anything from the old business listing that anybody wants to bring up? Who? All right. We're at new business. York County Beekeepers Association.
Man, just some heal, please?
Not for bees.
No.
They're just going to open the box. My name is Tom Curry, I reside at fifty-one Davidson Drive in Township. I, I reside in an R10 median density zone. I am here this evening to make a long story short, because I decided that my voltage retirement years, I would like to learn to keep the bees. It was a very challenging thing, and I did what I did in my professional career, which is do a lot of research. I went to all kinds of you know, day-long seminars, I read a lot of books, I attended beekeepers meetings, did my homework. And when, one of the things that was suggested was that you contact your township where you live, because they might have some issues with how many hives you could keep or some registration requirements. So I contacted the township, and Mr. Wujiani wrote me back a letter. And a copy of which I have, if you're looking for it.
I was looking for the definition of beekeeping.
Yes, what he said was, I couldn't do it. And the reason that I couldn't do it was that bees and apiary products are mentioned in the definition terms under agriculture and agricultural buildings. And township recognizes bees as agricultural under its definition. Agricultural usage can only be done in a rural RR zone or residential. Okay, I read that to me in farms. And as I looked at the township map, I discovered that farms are only located where the rural residential zone is located, I think, the northeast corner of the township building, large township area. So I looked at, after doing, looking, exploring the zoning code, I concluded as usual that Mr. Wujiani was right. And so I concluded that in order to do this, the ordinance looked at, that whoever did the ordinance, I obviously was not involved, and probably suspect most of you guys were either. But the ordinance really reflected a lack of understanding value. So I, in meeting, in my travels, I decided that the way to do this is to get the experts, hence Mr. Smith. Chris Smith, who is with me, Chris is the president of the York Area Beekeepers Association. That organization has about two hundred and fifty members. We have, I listed the aid of a local beekeeper in Hallow Township, a fellow by the name of Bill Sprinkle, who kept at one time about two hundred and fifty hives in Hallow Township. I also contacted the state beekeeper inspector, fellow by the name of Lee Weber. All of these gentlemen agreed that, after taking a look at the ordinance, that we're going to be talking to the township. So together, Chris and I met with Mr. Hodgkinson and asked for his help in whether, asked him to assign or someone to work with us from the township to make sure that township's interests, health, safety, and public welfare were met. He was kind enough to assign Mr. Heilman and Mr. Holmes. We had a meeting. It was Mr. Heilman recommended, probably time to come before you and at least get some guidance and direction. And perhaps supply a little bit of education, because like me, I suspect you guys don't know much, you know, don't know too much about bees. So that's the purpose of Mr. Smith, I'm going to turn the meeting over here to him at the end of his presentation, which will be relatively brief. I'm concerned how a lot, you guys, you folks may have a lot of questions. What we're looking for here today, to ask, is going to be that we get some direction from you, if something you'd like to take a look at. You know, it's now, I assembled the experts, they have the knowledge. One of the things I learned is that there was a, there's a state beekeepers website. There's actually a model ordinance on that website. The, we'd like to take a look at some local local ordinances, take a look at what they have, perhaps come back to you at some future time with the suggested modifications or ordinances as necessary. Whether or not I'm going to be able to keep bees or not, I don't know. I think so, okay, based on what I've read. I've learned a number of things, I mean, so you can keep bees in the center of Illinois. Lancaster City has a beekeeper. If you Google urban beekeeping, you will see all kinds of articles. There's articles on the state website about zoning bees. So we think we're going to come back to you and some good stuff. And we'd like your consent to move forward. So that we can do this. Chris?
Sure. So as I look around the room here a little bit, I'm coming up one fifty in a couple of months here. It's hard to believe in those kind of numbers, but as I look around, I see some of you folks, I've seen a couple of ladies here excluded, but they probably are in the same kind of generation. And one thing I remember distinctly as a kid is running around the yard and seeing bees all over the yard, clovered dandelions, things like that. And the question I have for you guys is, when was the last time you ever seen that? Because if you look around today, you don't see them, they're not there. That was actually one of the reasons that I got into beekeeping. And I'll get into that later, but today, we're, today, one of the big things that bees are facing are pests and pathogens. And the other thing is pesticides. Both of those have increased in use and effectiveness, or they damage the bees, and so that's causing a lot of issues with them with viability. So do, do you have a copy of the slides? I sent some slides on earlier. Are the, the folks able to see that, what that looks like?
Yeah, I'll be able to pull it up.
Yeah, it's not too much trouble, that would be helpful. There you go. Okay, if you just want to start under the next one, purpose, please. Yeah. There you go, okay. And so as, as Mr. Cranny talked about, we're really here to give and ask, and so, you know, you can read through that kind of, you know, point there, but there are laws already in place, Pennsylvania has several laws that mandate for beekeeping. Some of them fall under what we call this Pennsylvania Beekeeper Compliance Agreement. That's what not all Pennsylvania beekeepers are expected to abide by, and that's things to address, some of the things that you'd be concerned about. We want to be friendly neighbors to the folks around us, so making sure that, you know, our bees are friendly, they're not aggressive. If they start showing any kind of aggressiveness, we're supposed to re, I mean, there's just lots of things like that that we fall under that we're expected to follow as best practices for beekeeping. You have to register with the state, it does several things, but that, one of the things is, some inspection is Mr. Cranny had mentioned, so that someone can come out, look at the bees, make sure they're healthy, and that sort of thing. In your current ordinance, so kind of back to the ordinance, in your current ordinance, bees are considered agricultural, and that is true. This falls under the state of agriculture and the Department of Agriculture in Pennsylvania. But that doesn't really tell the whole story. In fact, if I, as I look at a canvas of beekeepers in Pennsylvania, because there were five thousand beekeepers in Pennsylvania, ninety-three percent of them have fewer than twenty-five colonies. So colony's about one of these guys. And so ninety-three percent of beekeepers have twenty-five or fewer colonies. And so we're really talking about this being a hobby, this is a bit more of, if I can put it in the category of pets -ish, sort of like that, but it really is a hobby more than a agricultural business for most folks like us. Yes, there's, of course, people who do that, and that's the people, like you mentioned earlier about Mr. Sprinkle. Two hundred and fifty hives, obviously, puts him in a different category than someone like me and Mr. Cranny, of course. But one of the things back to why we don't see bees like we did before, that's because today, we have about half the bee, half the colonies of bees in Pennsylvania that we did in nineteen eighty-two. We have about half the colonies of bees today than we did in nineteen eighty-two. Forty years later, we lost about half of our bees. And so bees are in trouble, and managed beekeeping is one way that we can help assist them. And so that's what we're asking for here. Pennsylvania has something they call the Pennsylvania Pollinator Protection Plan, it's P4 for short, but that's not fully the way you look at it. And part of that is because pollinators, especially the bees, have greater than fifty percent loss, winter loss ratio. So we lose more than half our bees every winter. And so in the spring, then, we have to build up and try to build those colonies back to what they are, you know, what they were going into winter. And again, that comes back to those pests and pathogens and pesticides. Both of those are beating up the bees in ways that they never did before, you know, when we were growing. And, and kind of just to kind of reiterate, this really isn't the same as, as raising cows or pigs or, you know, horses or things like that. It's not a density issue, because bees don't reside in a specific space, so, you know, tie the cow, I have, I need some pasture land. With bees, what they actually do is they kind of hide, and they go up about fifteen feet, and then they fly directly where they're at, before they turn bee line. That's pretty much what they do, so they go up fifteen, twenty feet, and then they head straight for where they're going. So they're not really generally around, you know, this area, so bees will fly up to two miles, and that is not uncommon for them to do, but fly two miles away to get their resources. So just like us, they need food, they need water. That food comes in two sources, they have nectar, so that's the part that comes and becomes honey, and then they have pollen, that's kind of their protein, if you will, and that's basically what we are. And so bees really are not aggressive. One of the big, that's one of the big concerns that most folks have with having a hesitancy or a concern over bees is getting stung, right? Well, if you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so that's actually was what I was just talking about there, so that's the honeybee that we're talking about. If you can go to the next slide, please. So mistaken identity, so when most people, most of your folks, talk about getting stung, and this fear that they have, they're really talking about that ugly thing on the bottom row, okay, the yellow jacket. Those are actually the ones that do tend to sting, whereas honeybee, the only, they really only sting out of defense, so again, if you step on it, you're going to get stung, that makes sense. Aside from that, if you're, unless you're rattling its box, it's really not going to sting, there's no need for it to defend itself, because they have a barbed hook, so when they sting, that bee dies. Whereas the yellow jackets on the bottom, they do not have that issue. When they sting, they can sting again and again and again and again. They are actually related to a wasp, they're not a bee, technically. So the yellow jackets, and you've all encountered them, they're not very friendly, they're the ones that you tend to get the calls for in August or so. Yeah, that, that's them. And so that's the difference, so when we're talking about honeybees, we're talking the top row, they are non-aggressive. I go up and I'll suit, I, I don't suit up all the time when I go to work on bees. When I do, I use natural gloves, not a lot of protection, so they're just not very aggressive naturally. And if you can flip to the last slide then, please. And so benefits of honeybees, you know, they come in all sorts of things, big thing is pollination, I talked to, this is one of the big reasons why I actually started keeping bees. We have a garden, we have a twenty by sixty yard, and we were having issues where our, our plants like zucchinis and squash would flower, and then they would just wilt a couple of days later, and they wouldn't come up with anything. So we took a Q-tip out and went from, you know, flower to flower to flower, we just wouldn't get anything, pickles, cucumbers, we just wouldn't get anything. And they said, this is crazy. And so my wife says, we need to keep bees. And when she meant we, she meant I need to keep bees, right? I'm like, yeah, I saw what happened to the crocodile hunter, that doesn't sound that fun to me, right? But, you know, here I am ten years later, and I actually really have a fondness and affinity for these people, I mean, I never thought ten years ago that it would be impressive to be York County Beekeeper, so there you go. But they, what, what I can tell you is, I don't have to go pollinate my garden. They, they take care of that, we have, you know, a much healthier crop out in our garden. Our flowers, trees, all those sorts of things are benefiting from having bees around, and our neighbors have said the same thing. And on top of that, we get some of the products that you can see in the middle there, honey. And we don't deal too much with pollen, but, you know, there are benefits for that, that some folks do, but we do get honey. And, you know, certainly the last Um, and uh, you know, certainly the last part there, the relaxation, it's a hobby. Um, so it's something that we do, it's fun, it's relaxing, it's what I spend my time with, some people golf, some people, you know. Do whatever, walk or whatever, go to the beach, we enjoy the bees, and so that's what we do. And so, let me just um. Uh, just mention a couple of quick things here, and then I'll look, you know, turn it back over to. Tom, and so your kind of beekeepers are willing to help any way we can. So we're coming alongside Tom as as a member of of beekeepers and certainly a member of your community. So we're willing to help any way we can, training and education of your your community. Um, and certainly to assist in drafting this, if you guys allow, allow us to do so, this ordinance. And uh, I'll just finish on this then, so in a recent poll conducted by the Philadelphia Inquirer, Inquirer, excuse me. Which asked, would you be comfortable if your neighbors were beekeepers and the bees would potentially be around your property? Seventy-three point four percent said yes. And twenty-six point six percent said no. That's in Philadelphia, my suspicion is around here, where we're in more rural America, the number in the yes column would probably be higher, uh, would be my guess.
Do anyone have questions of course, on your reason? You know, I'm I'm what they call a newbie, okay, versus the expert, and uh, we're gonna have, we would have more experts, you know, in this group, uh, if. You know, if you're super, well, I guess, a lack of a better term, um. Chris is here for questions, he would like to uh, uh, I will say this, that there are a lot of hives around here. The more I have looked, the more I have seen, that there's a lot of people violating this ordinance in places in my neighborhood, okay? You know, and it's true, you know, all over, um. You know, a- and and so. Fair day, I just don't think we ought to be doing things right now, we want to have a, you know, an ordinance that is that is workable for, you know, for the township as well as for uh. Uh, those people that would like to keep bees. Bees are funny, it's six to ten feet, when they come out of their hive, they're a tree top level. Okay, which is something I learned, fascinating to 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 pick that up, and that when you go to that picnic, okay, and you pick up your soda bottle, and there's that little guy flying around in there. That's a yellow jacket, that is funny, they have, they don't want anything to do with that, they're looking for pollen. Over how long is it, like six thousand acre or something?
Yeah, two miles, they're two mile radius.
Two mile radius, so flying around, you know, looking for, looking for uh. Flowers and such, so what we like to do, we can have, you know, to your consent, uh, Mr. Heilmann, uh, it will, you know, would be continuing to meet with us, I don't know if it, Mr. Holmes is or not, or if it's. You guys are boot back and forth, how that's working.
We're likely, we know that this, but you know, we would see, see what needs to be done.
Yeah, a- and we want to, you know, we'd like to work with the township to to see what's reasonable, what's fair, and what promotes health, safety, welfare of this uh of our. As a whole, with the experts.
So question. Um, so my understanding is that the the education has more to do with the professional beekeepers that move up and down the the coast. Going crop to crop, um, to pollinate larger farms. And then taking most of the honey, and so the bees starve, they don't, so. What I'm hearing is that it, that's more of the cause of loss of bees than uh, whether it's disease or pesticides or things like that.
Yeah, I I haven't heard that, actually, most of what I've seen, so the number that I gave is out of uh Pennsylvania, we do a a bee loss survey every winter, uh, every spring over. You know, talking about the the loss that they had, so the numbers that we account for can include folks like me who uh participate in this, so these numbers are ninety-three percent folks like me. Um, so is there loss there? Yeah, absolutely, I understand is uh upwards of ten or fifteen percent loss just from transport, because you've got these frames that uh rattle around together. So I can hear, so it frames like this, it sit there, and as they, you know, they can rattle around, and so you end up killing the bee. Which is, you know, it's just the hive, so yeah, there's some of that, but honestly, I don't believe that's the majority of the loss, I absolutely don't. So, or because most of the 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 big commercial folks take them down to Georgia, where they have blooms while we're still in winter. Um, so they actually, in fact, I was just talking to a gentleman last night, and he said that was really short this year, and so a lot of the commercial guys were spending upwards of fifteen thousand dollars in sugar water to to feed them. For emergency feeding.
Yeah.
So they do keep a pretty, pretty good um handle on them, because one of these colonies is valued at about four hundred and fifty dollars. So you take two hundred and fifty colonies, that adds up pretty quick, they they don't, yeah, they don't seize it that.
So I guess I know enough to be dangerous, my son is in pest control, his father-in-law, um. This, this was his major in college.
Thanks.
So I usually had discussions with him when we get together, and he tells me there is no such thing as a shortage of bees. It's a shortage of beekeepers that know how to keep their bees appropriate.
Yeah, well, I can, what I've read, my limited knowledge, a lot of it is disease, there there is something called mites, which are, are now attacking the pollen. There's something called hive collapse, there's all kinds of, you know, the pesticides do affect it, the harsh winter will affect the bees, there's a whole lot of things, it's very complex.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting I'm I'm against this in any way, I think, uh, honeybees are are kind of.
Yeah, so uh.
Important to our, our society, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, uh, the mites, as you mentioned, uh, came to hit the scene about nineteen ninety-four here, and so that's a big reason that from the eighties and so kind of the mid nineties, we saw a huge drop off, uh, so these mites. They, they uh attach themselves to the bees and they feed off of the fat cells inside the bees, and they, through that, much like a deer tick gives us Lyme disease. Gives the bees a disease as well, so then what happens is in the winter, when they cluster together, it spreads to the whole colony, and usually by, say, November, December, you can have a ginormous colony. And by November or December, they're dead, completely gone. And it's because of that that disease that they get, it's like, you know, putting someone with a flu, and then everybody coming in and huddling, I mean, everybody gets it. Um, so that's what the mites do, and that's, that's something that was, you know, now as beekeepers, kind of to your point, we've had to learn how to manage that, because that didn't exist more than twenty-some years ago. Uh, here anyway. Uh, the other thing is the use of myonicatoids, uh, which is the pesticides they coat a lot of the seeds with, so a lot of our corn and crops and things like that are coated with this. Now we're damn, you know, they're harmful to the bees from that standpoint, so it may not outright kill them, but what happens is when you go into winter, they're weakened, so then. Cold snaps or whatever, then they struggle to survive, and that's why we have such high losses where uh, prior to nineteen ninety-four and of these use of myonicatoids. While colony losses were fifteen percent.
So I have three questions, concerns that pop into mind, I jotted down before you're speaking.
Yes, sir.
Before I get to that, I'll just preface by saying that twice a year I get drank with it's by my wife who takes bee pollen for her allergies. So, I'm very familiar with bee pollen and how well it helps the allergies, uh, maybe this would save me a trip to Wintz.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Maybe you can uh join in the hobby and make your own.
But as a supervisor, I think in terms of, you know, what's gonna bring people out to the meetings to complain, you know, in terms of this issue, and I root down through the bands. I'd just like to hear your response to those, because I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but.
Fear factor.
Kids become the firsts, because kids don't respect people's boundary rights, territory rights, and young kids run around neighborhoods, they get into things they're not supposed to get into. Is there a concern, should we have a concern that some kid's gonna get into a beekeeper's hive, not knowing what's there? It turns out to be the kid that's hyperallerg- allergic to bee stings and ends up dying because he got in somebody's beekeeping. So that's concern number one that I think needs to be explored. Uh, second thing is uh, again, not knowing, do bees have this hobby? Is there a risk then of bees spreading to your neighbor's yard, so even though you enjoy beekeeping as a hobby, now your neighbor's got bees and he doesn't want his property, is that a risk? To waste time to spread when you have to set up a residential area? And then the third thing, and I think you might have addressed this a little bit, I trust Tom to be a very responsible beekeeper, but I'm sure as suggested, there are irresponsible ones out there. What are the consequences? We're gonna end up having to deal with from those irresponsible, so those are the three areas that I'd like to.
Having just gone through the chicken ordinance and uh, and uh, chicken support animals.
Right. Totally, so I can call them all pets.
Let me start backwards.
We said chickens are not pets.
Pets are unlimited.
Let me start backwards, because my memory's not so good, so uh, so the first one, um, I'd say, you know, absolutely, there there can be irresponsible beekeepers. There's irresponsible drivers, we deal with that all the time as well, um, as your kind of beekeepers, we are trying to educate and. Uh, not only education, but proper beekeeping, best practices, irresponsible beekeeping, so, yeah.
What are the consequences? So so if you do allow this to township, now you've got to get responsible beekeepers. What does that mean? What what's in here, what what's the consequence about it, irresponsible?
There is state law on this, and there are beekeeping inspectors that come around to ensure that you are functioning, you know, and properly handling these bees. The township, one of the things that's only, we may have is registration, so that, you know, we can, you can impose, and I I don't know how this will flesh out, we see, but. There are, you know, limitations that you can impose as township, I would think, you know, as to one number of lives. Or as to uh registration fees, or so that uh someone can come out and take a look, uh. You know, and enforce the zoning code, so there are things that can be done to deal with your responsibility. You know, the second, in that view, the fear.
About the, was it the children or the?
Children, yes, children, one of them. I call them kids. Okay, because that was the big concern that I had, because I got grandchildren, all of them, all of my property all the time, you know, just love to come over. Uh, hoping they'll, you know, get used. The, you wanna press that, why don't you, I'm not the expert.
Yeah, um. Like anything, of course, something can happen, um, but what I would have to say is, I mow in front of my bees, um, and there's no problem, I walk in front of them, I walk like this, I have absolutely no problem. It it would take some intentional. Rattling of the cage to really get them to to get riled up and, you know, have an issue like that. Um, so I'd say the chances of that are still pretty low, e- even with kids coming in and disrespecting, I mean. A- as long as I've been doing that, I've never heard of anything like that, um, you know, the worst things you're gonna find is like uh, windstorms and the the top blows off or something like that, but. You know, luckily, in a case like this, um, he's right there, so it, you know, lives back on. But as far as, you know, people come in, I think the risk is fairly low on that.
One of the um things that I I learned was, for example, one of the requirements you propose. You know, as a beekeeper, should I have an everything, you know, available, uh, so that if someone is stung, you know, that I can deal with that right away. Um, you know, maybe, you know, have an allergy, water source is is really significant. Um, bees will fly to the nearest water, that's what I learned. And but it may be, so my neighbor, for example, has a swimming pool right next door, and I'm already thinking about that and saying, okay. Maybe I ought to have a bird bath right next to the, you know, right next to the hives, so that they'll go to the closest water source. Those are really efficient with guys, for those actually. Uh, and and they will, you know, do that, so there are things you can do to mitigate that. Uh, and and this is one of the things that was told to me by by, actually, Mr. Sprangle, he said, you know, if you're gonna keep bees. You shouldn't, you know, don't go up to this, you know, rural residential and talk to the farmer, you need to be on site, you know, you need to be sure. That that those bees are, you know, are are on, you know, you're watching them. You can, you know, you can have setback lines, limitations on number of hives, there's a whole lot of things you can do, but the key factor. Is is they don't want, they don't want to stay, and it's really an educational problem, one of the things that I would like to do. Before we bring anything back to you, is is to hold some public meetings, okay, bring the people in, educate what this gentleman is doing, educate. Community, and those people with concerns, so that, you know, it can be, it can be dealt, we can deal with that, you know, off the top. You know, I I was stunned, there there's, in my neighborhood, in somebody's front yard, there are ten hives. You know, not a complaint, you know, um, I'm not gonna, you know, turn a guy in or anything, but, you know, it's it's the fact is. It it's not a concern with education, that's, okay, and what was the other question?
I think wandering, I was gonna, I'm sorry, wandering bees?
Yeah, you you have bees, your neighbor doesn't want them, all of a sudden, your neighbor has a bee.
Right, and so in the spring, around this time, you'd have uh what we call swarming, and so that's where the that's. The bees' way of splitting, uh, in in nature, that would be their way of doing, of course, we manage that process. And so one of the things that we do, so to your point then, they would split, take half the bees, and then they fly into a tree or some other. You know, fence post or, you know, something like that, and then they try to find a home, and so what ends up happening is we, is your kind of beekeepers, and hopefully, maybe. Sir Cranny would uh receive calls and say, hey, you know, we've got uh these all bees or whatever, come get it, and they usually hang there for several hours. And a lot of times what we'll do is come and form these type of boxes, um, and then scoop all the bees in and shut them away, basically, is the way we do that, so. Uh, part of that best practices of managing the the bees is trying to mitigate forming. So, and then.
A bunch of swarms of yellow jackets.
No, no, the the bees will do, yeah, those swarm as well, but there are there are mechanisms that we can do to minimize that, so, uh, to try to mitigate that, and. That's the best practices, and and kind of back to your question about the uh, the irresponsible type beekeepers, um. I I think as I was just mulling that over a little bit, one of the things I would. Say that strikes me is, most of the folks in our community, it's kind of a, say we're kind of weird, so we kind of have a niche community, like Apple users or something like that, okay? And it's kind of fanatics to some degree, um, so I haven't really seen a lot of irresponsible beekeepers, what. Biggest thing that I've seen is people just abandon the hive, so they just kind of get tired of it, like it gets hectic, whatever it might be, and so they just abandon them. And um, you know, so that can certainly be part of the ordinance, that if it becomes an eyesore or something, it's, you know, obviously not being managed, that would need to be addressed or, you know, removed, but. Um, I haven't generally seen too much of that in our communities so far, so.
If if one of the things I've learned, it's not as simple as getting a box like that, we use it as a goal of commitment, so. Expect these guys, how many times a week, you know, and that means actually opening up the box, looking at them, yeah, you know, looking at the highs, be sure they got a queen, just sometimes. Things happen, and and so, uh, from a sad aspect, the second thing, George, is that. This hobby costs about a thousand bucks to get into, I mean, it's not cheap, you know, by the time you get all the equipment and the boxes and. You know, all the things you need, the insertions and everything, it's expensive, and so it's not like, you know, somebody's gonna get it on the.
You know, just order them off Amazon, that would show up.
It's complex, it's like a chess game, it it really is, trying to keep these guys in there, and that's why I like it, it's, the more I learn about it, the more invested you're taking.
I think you can order some of this tide stuff.
You can order the box, yeah, yeah.
The ones with the with the tea that separates it and drains the honey out.
Oh, yeah, the slow hives.
Yeah, slow hives.
Uh, we don't wanna take up too much of your time, but, uh, so the the question is, the question I have with you gentlemen, and is is. Should we be, you know, is it okay, and we have your blessing, I guess, except for proper, okay, to go ahead and put this group together and get these experts in and bring the township in. You know, continue our, look in your ordinances and and see, there's a whole lot of options that are around there.
As long as you understand we're not guaranteeing that we're gonna.
I'm not asking for a guarantee.
Do everything that you want us to do.
You know, and and, you know, all I'm asking is, okay, guys, go ahead and do your thing, you know, maybe, you know, hold some public meetings, you know, before we bring it back, so let's see what the community says. Um, you know, uh, Mr. Heilmann said something about uh, uh, the planning, planning, township planning work.
Yeah, with a planning commission, yes.
Yeah, is that something that we should be going to? I don't know.
Well, certainly you could, they they may want to hear about it, uh, there's a consideration that.
I would think before we come back to the issue of approval, I wanna, I wanna make sure the township, that the concerns that, you know, that you've expressed were are dealt with. Because I don't want to come in here and have a big stink, I wanna deal with that before we get there.
So, I will say that we we have gotten some complaints about bee hive, if you will, in in the township, it it's not. A large issue, but what, I have received some uh since I've been here and. Now, Mr. Holmes at Pac Day is doing, I started up, Mr. Rudy, I have a problem with some too, but they're not a day-to-day complaint that we receive, but we have received some that. Folks are aware that it's not allowed in township as we speak. Folks are aware that it's not allowed in township as we speak and somebody has one. So I'll be addressing that.
Let me ask you a direct question to you. Is the concern, the conduct of, uh, you know, that, that something improper is going on? Other than it's not a part of the township, if somebody gets stung, it's that kind of thing?
I have not heard that. No, it's just the fact that they see that they're there and that that's something that's not allowed in the township as it's done today.
The reason why I knew the rules of, of bee hives is people see the box come in and because they don't know anything about, uh, the hobby. They call up the township and say, hey, is this allowed in my township? And they look and, oh. And that, it's not that they've been stung or they've been a nuisance, it's they, they observed by.
Yeah, okay. That's, that answers my question. I wanted to know the actual problems other than.
And, and the one called, this was just very recent, that they were concerned about it going as, Mr. Woryak mentioned that bees. Go into their property and get stung. That's basically this, the last one was in regard to that.
Very real concern that's going to have to deal with. I, I know. So I guess, you know, you know, we're okay to, to forward and. I, I was here about this.
Yeah, I'd love to hear, find out.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
Interested in what other ordinances might look like and what the, yeah, communities are facing.
So let me share with you the game plan down the road. Uh, you know, I, I would, I, I think we're going to get these experts together. Make sure the township is involved. Try and draft what we think is a reasonable ordinance. Uh, and then begin the process of, you know, educating, holding some public meetings perhaps and make sure, uh. Uh, Mr. Hodgson's help, we can, you know, perhaps, uh, educate township and let them know what the needs are. And, uh, have a more fuller presentation back here to, you know, deal with any concerns. So, okay. So, yes, 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 yes.
Sounds good.
Steve, you okay with this? He's not sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any turn.